Record.
Okay, thank you, Eric. We'll call this meeting to order. This is the March thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, town of Andover Board of Finance Special Budget Meeting. Go ahead and go to the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands one nation. Thank you. We'll move to item two, which is public speak. Normally, we do a round robin, but I don't see any of the members of the public in the meeting. So I think we can go ahead and bypass that option or bypass, go skip that agenda item, go on to number three. Yep, Joanne?
I apologize. I was having connection trouble, and I know I came in when Eric was talking about the minutes, which I I kind of liked. I thought they were good. Do we not have a clerk yet?
Oh, we do. I was just introducing Amy Knox, who will be doing the minutes for the Board of Finance meetings going forward, who is on this call, but labeled as Turner, which is her son's name.
Perfect. Thank you.
Computer.
All right. I thought I missed that. Okay, thanks.
Yep.
No worries. Okay, we'll go on to Agenda Item Three, which is the Budget Workshop for the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. So we had an updated budget file from Sherry sent, I think, yesterday. So we also, I know you guys had looked through the Public Works, this is the plan for last week. So I guess we'll just open this up. Eric, is there anything that you or Sherry want to add or or point to in this budget updated file that you provided?
Uh, yes, I want to go over some notes based on our last meeting, things that you asked us to supply you into look.
I don't have an updated budget file. There was just a revenue report, so I guess I'm confused.
Yeah, there wasn't one set. It was
Okay.
no changes, so I didn't feel that I needed to send that.
Okay, perfect. Okay.
Yeah.
On the right one.
Oh, I'm sorry. My apologies. I I since I wasn't at the meeting last week, I saw it from Sherry before I was there. Yeah.
That was.
It came in since my last meeting, and I didn't look at the date. That's what kind of week it's been. All right. My apologies. I didn't need to confuse everybody.
So if you wanted to let me share the screen, I'll talk you through kind of what we've looked at between the last meeting and this meeting. And then you also talked me to ask for a big overview and basically the five biggest budgetary changes. So I would go over that. And then it's pretty much wherever you want to go, if you want to, if you want me to do that first.
Sounds reasonable to me.
Works for me.
Alrighty. Let me pull that up. Uh, whoops. Okay, do you see something that says Board of Finance notes?
Yeah.
Hopefully. Okay, good. All right, so um, just so that you know where we are with the budget right now, the town budget as presented is a three hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollar increase, which is about eleven percent. Um, you know, last year's budget obviously was flat, so at some point, the Board of Selectmen is going to have to do a gut check and decide, you know, what you think is actually realistic. And then, you know, either as is or, you know, some other level, and then, you know, we all collectively start working on it. So um, one of the tasks last week was to track electrical usage. Uh, this was because of two things. One, in light of a very significant year-over-year increase in supplies fees, because those track with energy. Um, so uh, you know, we'll, I'll talk about that in a little bit. So first thing is, um, before I had an estimated cost for the building official, I finally got essentially a contract going forward for the building official and what it would be. Um, the good news is my number was within, my estimate was within ten dollars of the fee they came back with, so no change there. Good. The second thing was mowing. Uh, mowing is a catch-all category that encompasses Andover Landscaping, who mow a lot of our properties, plus the money we spend with Hebron Parks and Recs maintaining our fields. Um, one of the things the board has asked to do differently this year is uh, this person, Richard Clarko, used to be the kind of director for Hebron Parks and Recs, and he's now retired from Hebron and gone out on his own. So we have sub-hired Mr. Clarko to do the, basically, the the knowledge part of maintaining the fields and then using Hebron Parks and Recs for the actual work. So we've been trying to get contracts out of them for a while. We've had the number from Rich Clarko. We don't have the number from Andover Landscaping. Um, we've tried repeatedly to get a hold of Matt Cordner, but he doesn't work a lot in the off-season, and he's almost impossible to get a hold of. Um, we finally got the firm numbers today from Hebron Parks and Recs. So um, I laid it out under item number two, mowing. Fixed costs, twenty-three hundred dollars, contract signed with Richard Clarko for monitoring and ma- monitoring of the fields. Um, the quote from Hebron Parks and Recs, that is an estimate based on current costs and last year's um, actual number of hours they spent maintaining our fields. So I I suspect the hours number is pretty good. You know, the the cost numbers for materials are up pretty substantially. I mean, seed costs are way up, fertilizer costs are way up. So so that has gone up. I mean, practically, that bill has gone from thirteen thousand three hundred to about seventeen thousand one seventy-seven. As you know, we we were budgeting twenty-one thousand five hundred for that. Um, which depending on what we get back from Andover Landscaping may still work, but it also gives us zero wiggle room, um, if we have any sprinkler problems with the system. And, you know, off and on, you know, a bunch of years, we have had sprinkler systems. So out of the last five years, I think two years, we've had significant costs for dealing with sprinkler systems. In a couple of years, we've had essentially no costs. So that's that. My recommendation would be to bump that budget up to twenty-three thousand. Um, and I would also recommend, because we rent, we charge a company called FC North for use of the field, because they're a, you know, uh, they're a nonprofit soccer organization, but they charge for membership, so we charge them to use. So when this new budget year goes in, my, I think I I've suggested to the board that they need to figure out what percentage of those costs, you know, they want FC North to cover. Currently, FC North has been covering about seventy-five hundred, which has been about half the cost of Hebron Parks and Recs uh, services. So that would be my recommendation for that. Um, second, we spent a lot of time going over electrical usage. And electrical usage is difficult to categorize. Um, so in the reason is it's, there's two components. There's a supply component and there's a distribution component. Um, and we don't know what either of those is going to cost going forward. I can tell you that we did a spreadsheet of all the departments year-over-year, what our costs were. And ballpark across the board, our costs are up about twenty-five percent year-to-year from last year to this year. And if you'll notice that most of my budgets from last year for electrical usage are going to be over about twenty-five percent, because we were just not anticipating that increase in the current budget when we made the budget last year. Because remember, we're not trying to figure out what costs are going to be, you know, four months from now at the start of the budget. We're trying to forecast what's costs are going to be sixteen months from now, you know, and and none of the rates, like the utility rates are are generally uh done in six-month increments. So right now, I basically know what our costs are for. I have a pretty good estimate for for streetlight costs for the next, you know, eleven months. And I have a pretty good estimate for our utility costs for the next, you know, four months for supply. But after that, you know, I have no idea what the utility commission is going to be. So what I did is I projected out what this year's actual costs would be, added fifteen percent to that and suggest that we use that as a target for next year. Now, whether that's going to be high or low, you know, I have no idea. I mean, you know, we could increase it more and be more conservative. Um, you know, I I don't know what your thoughts are, but but I will send this to you immediately after the presentation. Um, we can either adjust the budget to these values, you know, or we can do whatever you want to do. Um, and I'd be happy to share the full spreadsheet with you if you want to go through all the graphs and trends and all that. Um, but this is just a summary of what the electrical usage costs are projected and likely to be. Questions? Shoot.
Um, so these numbers are not in or have not been updated yet, and these are the numbers.
Correct.
So these are your recommended numbers, I guess. I would ask that they be put into the budget, but especially so we can consider them there and see what the impact is.
Wha- wha- what's in the current budget now? Do you, is there an estimate that's lower than this?
Yeah, across the board, our estimates are lower. Um, I have a copy of the budget that I can share in just a sec, which has those numbers uh, highlighted, so we could go update them pretty quickly. Um, if you wanted to do that. Um, I just didn't feel, since we're far enough along in the budget, I don't want to be showing a budget showing numbers that were different than you've actually approved and talked about. Um, but we can certainly do that.
Anything yet, really, so I guess.
Right.
If you think these are reasonable estimates based on your calculations, and these little notes are very helpful. You know, I would update the spreadsheet, and I paste these little short notes that into the notes column, so that I'll just kind of show how you got to that number.
Yep.
Yeah, I think that makes sense also.
Yeah, we can certainly do that. I mean, you know, the good thing is we're looking at, you know, not a ton of money. You know, we're looking at three to four thousand, which is not insignificant, but it's not like in the grand scheme of the budget, it's not earth-shaking. Well, say five or six thousand total. Um, so in in terms of other things we didn't have before, um, these are the kind of things we've we figured out. We finally got a good number from Hebron Parks and Recs. We finally got a good number for the cost basis for the building official. Um, you know, and then uh, you know, and and then the details on the electrical usage. So since the last meeting, that's really what we've had in terms of the things we've identified um, based on the commentary in the last meeting. Um, the other thing you guys asked me to do as a group is talk about where the biggest increases are. Um, and that's really easy. I mean, there's two big areas which are kind of the bulk of the overall increase. The first is Public Works and Town Garage, which we've gone over. All total between Public Works and the Town Garage, as it is now with the addition of a full-time employee and a part-time employee, that is a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollar, five hundred dollar increase. And the other thing is the overall capital funding is up a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. Um, so I guess what I would say is that, given that the largest increases are those two, if you're really going to cut, any significant expenditures are going to have to cut from one of those two spots, because you're not going to cut enough to make a meaningful difference without frankly tapping one of those. Um, and so ballpark numbers, you know, the cost of the full-time hire is about a seventy thousand dollar change. Um, the cost of the part-time helper is an increase of about fifteen thousand. I mean, the total budget for the part-time helper is about twenty thousand. But even if we don't hire, like, somebody all summer, there are always times when we need part-time help. So we're always going to spend some money out of that category. Um, the other thing we can con- consider, and we haven't really talked about it, but we recommended setting the contingency budget for seventy-five thousand from fifty. Um, and and that's just a reality of, you know, when you're, when you have a three-plus million-dollar budget, you know, trying to trying to be accurate in budgeting within fifty thousand dollars is a really low percentage to hit. And that's probably not realistic, given the variability, the overall variability in our budgets based on utility costs. Um, you know, I mean, one employee that quits and is replaced by somebody with with a family, you know, can be a twenty thousand dollar swing. So when you only have a fifty thousand dollar, you know, uh, contingency, that's that's tough on a town's basis. But you can consider that if you so desire. Um, and then as far as capital funds, you know, I didn't want to make this decision myself. I asked, you know, the Public Works Director, where he thought of the things he was concerned with, where could they absorb the cuts the most? Um, his basic recommendation was they could, they could absorb the cut in the tree work fund um, better than in roads. Um, so if it came down to one or the other, he would prefer the tree work fund. Um, the other thing I would say is if we had to reduce the building maintenance fund, I mean, frankly, spending money in the building maintenance fund in large part depends on our abilities to plan and manage projects. Um, and given the time availability, you know, we know we have a lot more needs than we have budgeted, but it's also difficult to get it all the way through to a shovel-ready project. So we could potentially absorb some cuts there. Um, and then I think we could, we could deal with little cuts in some of the other funds. Um, you know, beyond that, it it gets more painful. Um, so that's really what I wanted to say on that. Those are the kind of big-ticket items. Um, and then, I'm sorry, I screwed up. I brought the wrong graph home, so these current balances are not correct in this, um, which is kind of irritating me because I have the correct one sitting on my work computer, but that's beside the point. So that's pretty much it. I'll stop sharing my screen unless you have more questions on this, or I could bring up the budget screen if that helps.
Question. You said contract planner, five thousand dollars. I didn't think we had a planner in our budget. So what are you talking about for there?
So the Board of Selectmen in the budget um, made a decision that they didn't want to have an hourly, you know, somebody there for a set number of hours, but they asked to put in the budget a five thousand dollar allotment. So for an individual project, they could use a contract, they could hire a planner for a specific project if one arose.
So where is that in the budget then? Because I didn't see that, so.
It's under zoning Board of Appeals. It's road six twenty-six in the budget.
Okay, thanks, Mark.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't remember that. That would zero it out last year. It's it's a new line there.
I contract.
I'm, yeah, planning a zoning commission, sorry. Zoning Board of Appeals. It's plenty, yeah, plenty of zoning.
So that was six.
Six two six.
Yeah.
Eight oh three three twenty is the count.
Right. Yep. Um, and then the only other thing I wanted to say.
To do with the Plan of Conservation Development that we have to do, right?
No.
Okay.
No. So so what's going on right now with the commission is they are required to draft an affordable housing plan. And we do have a grant that I secured, you know, for the writing the affordable housing plan. But there's a bunch of things that would have to happen to actually change our regulations to uh, enable some of the elements of the Affordable Housing Plan to be put into effect. Um, and frankly, there's a bunch of changes that we know we need to make because our current zoning don't comply with state law after the last set of regulatory changes made by, you know, the State House and uh, passed by the House last year. So we're going to end up spending some money to accomplish that, either with the planner or with our town's attorney. Um, you know, outside of our normal legal uh, you know, uh, legal board budget.
So if we have that on the to-do list, where are we making the in the budget, the money for it? Because obviously, we're going to hire a contract, a ten ninety-nine person to do it for us. That can be a town employee, so.
Right. That's why there's a five thousand dollar line for contact, contract planner right now.
Okay, but that's not attorney?
No, so if you look about that.
Too, right?
There's a line item for legal and professional. Um, and that we've increased also. So that is shared by all the land use agencies. So Planning and Zoning, Inland Wetlands, Zoning Board of Appeals, um, you know, and potentially the Conservation Commission for legal advice. So that money is shared between all. Um, you know, and it's, it was set at five thousand for, you know, from before I was on the Planning and Zoning Commission, so that that had been five thousand for the last, you know, umpteen years, and, you know, we've always had a trouble. You know, in years where lots of regulatory change have to occur, meeting that. And right now, we're in a period where a lot of regulatory things have to change. Um, and if we're not going to have an actual staff member as a planner, you know, the the kind of solution for that um, is to, you know, at least put some money aside for contact, contract planner and increase the legal professional line item somewhat.
Okay, because that legal professional line item is one of my questions that I reviewed, because I'm looking at this thirty percent increase, and year-to-date, we've already spent six thousand six hundred and four dollars. So we overspent what you're recommending for. So and I didn't know there were other things. I was just thinking that was just the shared expense from all the land use departments. So if you're telling me this also includes updating regulations, then that seems like that's not a good number.
Well, the the majority of that, more than anything else, that money is spent on updating regulations. There are times and cases, like I'm sure right now for the commercial application and site plan review, you know, we've sought legal guidance on that with our land use attorney. Um, you know, one of the things that we've done, um, you know, and and we've also, that legal slash professional line item also covers some of the costs if we have to use uh, an engineer to review. Like in this latest case, we referred that to the town's engineer. Um, so that would normally get charged against the legal and professional line item. Now, since we're so far over it, we will probably, and we're probably going to have some leftover in our uh, the town's engineering budget, we'll suck that extra into the town's engineering budget. But that's part of the reason why the contract planner is there is because instead of taking it out of the professional line item and taking it away from the legal portion of the budget, you know, we have some budgeted for a planner. Um, and in some cases, it's more cost economical to have a planner suggest the changes than use the town's attorney. We use the town's attorney because he used to be a planner, um, before he became an attorney. So he, you know, he's a, a land use attorney, but, you know, he's also has pretty impeccable planning credentials.
Okay.
Joanne, I think you had a question?
So that, well, I have a question. That three twenty then, that contract planner, that is really professional services for a planner?
Correct.
Okay. Which we don't have in our budget now. I'm just really concerned that it's legal professional, because we're already over year-to-date, so why are we putting a number in that we may not even meet next year? If that's not even correct.
Well.
Can I ask a follow-up before we?
Go ahead, Joanne.
Sorry, if my internet is going in and out, and I think I lost you, so I hope this wasn't asked. Are we, since we're talking employees and stuff, are we making it perfectly clear when we bring on, like, a contracted ten ninety-nine employee or, you know, that kind of very part-time employee that they're not a staff member? Um, I just don't want to, in that, not to to say a lot of things, but I just do have some concerns after reading kind of some of the personnel policies that they're very vague. So do we, do we make it clear? Do they get written letters or or just, I was wondering how that goes?
I mean, they, I mean, typically, um, eh, in so over the years, I was involved with the Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, we either, we have a standard arrangement with Mark Brants, who's an attorney at Halloran and Sage. Um, he just, you know, he has a a hourly rate, and we are simply charged by the hour for his services. Um, for planning services, um, we've interacted with a couple of planners over the last ten years. Um, mostly, we farmed stuff out to a guy named Bill Warner. Um, and what we do with Bill is we do it on a project basis. So we, like, with the the uh, plan for affordable housing, um, we went out to RFP. We selected Bill Warner as the lowest-cost vendor for the services, and, you know, because he's actually really good at it. Um, and we entered into a a contract with him that the attorney reviewed beforehand. So that's normally what, you know, with the contract planner, you know, for most things, we are going to, you know, we're going to basically um, hire them for a project at a fixed cost.
Yeah, just, I just want to make sure I, it's just the way the language is, and if people are needed for more hours or something, you know, just to make sure there's no loopholes or little wiggle room. Okay. Contract by contract. Thank you.
So I'm going back to that. I can't let this go, this legal professional again, because it it blows my mind. We're recommending sixty-five hundred dollars, but we've already spent more than that year-to-date, and we're not done with the year. So how do, what's the justification, I guess, to say that it's not going to be greater than, I mean, I don't want to put a number in there that we know it's going to be more than that. I'd rather put the correct number in what we think it's going to be.
So.
Because people are going to look at these line items, they're going to see, look at these big increases, and they're, and, you know, they're just going to want to make sense out of it. That's all. That's all I'm trying to just make sense out of it. That's all I'm trying to do.
Right, and and I think so, we're going to get a couple of big things done this year. We're going to have the Affordable Housing you know, thing complete and as part of our Plan of Conservation Design. We're going to have our our sign regulations up and modified and as part of our plan and done in this budget year. That's a big chunk of what Marcus has been done, because frankly, our our existing sign regulations, which were written about fifteen years ago and hadn't really been updated, don't meet the Supreme Court's, you know, recent decisions. So we've had to go back and modify our regulations in light of, you know, more recent Supreme Court decisions on what we can do and what we can't do. Um, and that's a super controversial, I'm sure that's chewed up a fair amount of money, you know, in in legal advice, frankly. Um, so those are, they're, the next thing we really need to tackle is that there are some regulatory changes that go into effect December first of this coming year that we have to deal with. Um, that deal with uh, multifamily houses as well as accessory dwelling units, granny pods, um, you know, attached and detached structures, apartments, you know, on your own property. So we are going to spend some money on that. In talking to the Chairman of the Commission, those are really the big things that we have on the plate. Much of that is baked into the current budget. Um, you know, the Affordable Housing stuff was a standalone grant. Mark Brants has already done most of the legal background work for the sign regulation changes. So, I mean, I think between the legal professional line and the contract planner line, they can get as much done as. they can get as much done as, you know, you know, as is, uh, as the commission needs, I think. But, you know, it's, but maybe a month from now, somebody walks in with a 30 unit subdivision in town. That's a, you know, a, one of the affordable housing subdivisions. And we spend the next year in court. I mean, I, I can't, you know.
I guess I'm trying, just looking at our year to date spend, it is just not making sense to me. I know you saw the contract plan, but I don't know what the difference between contract planner as legal and professional is. Contract planner is doing what for us? Writing regulations?
So typically.
Attorney review them?
A, a contract planner would be right, would be helping the commission conceptualize and draft a regulation. We would tend to, after we were done with that, have the attorney review. But most of the time, if the planners come up with the regulation, you know, there's not a ton of legal money involved. It's mostly on the planning end of it. Whereas in often cases, we end up using Mark for both the kind of planning and conceptual idea part and the legal part, which gets more expensive.
Eric, Eric, if I could, if I could ask a quick question, I think may help all of us understand a little bit better and may help clarify this going forward. But by contract planner, this is not a position that's planning contracts.
No, correct.
This is a planner that is under contract.
Right.
So I think that the language is a little confusing, given that we have a legal and professional. You know, uh, account category. So, so there might be a way to change that wording in the, in the budget line item to planner dash contract or something like that, you know, or, or consultant. Uh, might even be a better word to use.
Planner, professional services.
Planner or something. Yeah. Cause, cause that's going to probably be, it's just a little confusing, I think.
I mean, you could also very legitimately just combine those two and put all the money in the legal professional category if you want. You know, and then.
Is this expected to be an ongoing expense year to year?
Um.
Cause if, if, if we don't think it will be, then I would say it probably belongs in legal and professional. I would say it probably does anyway. Frankly, I don't know why you'd spike it out separately.
So I, I can tell you that in, you know, in 10 years, when I was on the planning and zoning commission, we were under the $5,000 cap overall. Probably seven of those years. We got sued one year and we were way over. You know, we probably spent 12 or $14,000. One, we took on a major rewrite of the regs where we ran about $12,000 over. You know, it, but also a couple of those times we had, we had put in specific planner money, dollars, because we knew we needed a planner to tackle certain subjects. So, I mean, that's kind of the ballpark. I, I mean, I think in a good year with nothing major happening, meeting a $5,000 legal budget isn't that bad overall for the, the land use commissions. It's only when they're undergoing lots of regulatory change or they're having very controversial applications, you know, that they really need to run up, you know, run up money.
Since we know we have these regulatory issues that we have to deal with in this next fiscal year, then we should plan for them. We should put the correct number under legal professional and have that being attorneys or whatever contract professional services we hire for and increase it to what the number we think it should be. And then put an explanation as why it spiked this year. And the reason, because there is this deadline that we have to get this certain stuff done by December 1st. It may not happen again next year. We can't account for lawsuits. We never know when that's going to happen. But if we know there's regulatory change that we have to update for and we're planning to do that this year, those numbers should be in the budget.
Right. And, and I think that that was the goal to accommodate those between the contract planner and the legal and professional line item. Now, whether you call that all one line item or whether you identify them together.
I would rather put it in one line item. So I have a trend. So I can see from year to year. Rather than creating a new line item. I don't know what anybody else thinks about that, but I would rather have it there. And then have an explanation of why that number is so high this year, because we know we have specific things that have to be done.
Yeah. I, I agree. It is, it is a legal or professional service. You know, if it were $20,000 or something significant amount really out of the ordinary, and we really wanted to call it as a separate line item, then to me it would make sense. But, you know, I, I think one of the things we tried to do this year was to reduce the number of, of accounts and things that we were using and not expressing. So maybe consolidate. And I, I don't know if that helps to have it, um, separated there.
And it's good for us to try, because we should be able to plan for regulatory change because we know when it's going to happen. So there is going to be spikes year over year because of that. Can't plan for a lawsuit. We have no idea when that's going to happen. So.
Well, what we can't do is figure out what's going to pass, you know, in the legislature in, in any one year. So I, I mean, I can't tell you what the.
I'm saying after the regulations passed, after the regulations passed, we know what we have to do next.
Right. Correct. Okay. Does that, is that, so that's, you're okay with that, moving the 5,000 to that line item and just leave it there?
Do any board members disagree with that strategy?
Yeah.
Okay.
Make sure we have good explanation notes, because I think the notes are going to be very important for this budget year, because we've got a lot of changes.
Concur. Okay. What else? Do you want to review or talk about?
I have things all over the spreadsheet, so I don't want to get off on a tangent. I don't know how, if we want to do it by department or how we want to organize this, because I have a lot of things, account numbers that are on here that we don't have that account number in our current reports. I've made notes on that because I don't know why they're different. And then some numbers that don't jive with year to date expenses. Things like that. So I don't want to get, jump around everywhere. You know, it's kind of.
I think.
Do you want to, Diane, if you gave us a list of all those things, I would do exactly what we did at this meeting and come back to you with a detailed explanation of each. If that makes more sense, rather than going through them one at a time.
I think especially in the number discrepancies, that probably makes sense. If there's anything where, where we have questions about the account structure or what an account means. You know, that, that may be something that you or Henry Cherry can answer, you know, right off the top and get that one out of the way. But otherwise I would agree, like discrepancies and things you're not going to have the answer for. So it might be easier to deal with that, you know, with a separate inquiry, but.
I can certainly, my spreadsheet, you know, I've highlighted everything in yellow and put a comments column in for myself with my questions. So I can send that out to everybody. So you can see.
Okay.
That'd be good.
So can I just, before we go any further, you know, ask for kind of a board of finance, like gut check? What all do you think is doable, reasonable? Where are you? Are you thinking we're going to put something like this before the public? Do you think we're looking at large decreases? What are your expectations at this point?
I'm, I think that I would, to, I think it makes sense to go ahead and poll the board of finance members in turn. And if you don't have any opinion, you don't have any opinion. Um, I'll go first. I think it's a big increase. So I think that it's going to be very difficult to get this entire thing through. I personally don't have any quibble with the budget as it is, because I think that it's reasonable and some of this stuff is needed. So, you know, I'll, I'll go on the record right there saying that that's, that's kind of my position, but what did we end up with? A 10 and a half, 11% increase?
Yeah, we're looking, we're a little over 11% right now.
Yeah. So that's, that's a, that's a, that's a tough one. Right? So I think that it's, we've got to find someplace to dial that back to some degree. And I know that that's not going to be easy. So I'm, I'll go down and order board members on my screen. Diane, you're listed next. Do you want to put in your two cents?
I think it's a big number. I don't have an opinion yet because I'm trying to make sure like, one of the issues we have, I'm just trying to make sure the numbers we have are realistic and accurate. And I have gone through, I spent the whole day Monday going through it. I went and looked at these numbers and I compared them to what we spent last fiscal year and what we spent year to date so far through February, because I wanted the most current numbers to try and get a handle. And sometimes I can make sense out of it and sometimes I can't. So I think the message to the public is, is they're going to have, they're going to want to make sense out of it too. So until we get those, I still have some salary numbers that are wrong on here that don't match the salary spreadsheet. So I don't know what those are. I've made those notes in my spreadsheet. So, um, so where we would cut, I don't know. I think the things that we've asked for are things we've planned for and we want them. I don't think it's going to, this budget will pass first round. So I'm pretty sure it won't pass.
All right. So we do.
We're really going to have to do the cuts because I think if we get some feedback, it will help us.
Yeah. Linda, I have you up next. You have any input?
Um, where am I? Hi, um, I just think the town's going to see 10 or 11% and they're just going to automatically vote it down. I know things are tight in some individual households, but then things are tight in town too. And we've let things go so long. I don't know what's going to happen, but as it is, I don't think it'll pass.
Okay. Thank you. Oh, everyone, it keeps slipping on me, depending on who spoke last. Rob, you're up next.
Sure. Um, you know, I think back to last year. I think back to all the effort that we put in to try and find a reasonable mid-ground last year. And we kicked the can again on capital and we got zeroed out anyway. So for what it's worth, I think 10%, I, I think last year we came in, the original budget ask last year was lower than this in terms of a percentage increase. And I knew that was flatly unpassable. And so this one is too. Uh, I have very little, I, I'm a little, I'm at this point quite frustrated. So I'll just say, we're obviously going to have to cut this. We have to find ways to cut things in ways that will do the least damage. So apropos of what Eric was talking about before with, you know, if you have to cut something in public works, cut trees, not roads. You know, we're, that's what we're going to end up having to do. But, you know, I don't actually mind the idea of bringing a budget we know will pass to the town if we think it's the right budget. And trying to educate people that the longer this goes on, the longer we underfund certain things, the more we're shooting ourselves in the foot down the road. That's my take. I'm done.
All right. Thanks. Gergis, Kurt, it's the next up on my screen.
Uh, my, my take is that, uh, you know, 10, 11% increase is not going to, not going to pass first time. I, I do have a question. I, where's the school budget stand? Right now, you know, we, it seems every year we, we come through with something and we start pitting the school against the town and or, or vice versa. I haven't heard a whole lot of grumblings in regards to the school budget. You know, and catch, I'm still, still trying to catch up from, uh, from my absence, but, uh, I have been reading a lot of things, but have a, have an alternate plan of where we do need to cut. If, uh, you know, if the townspeople turn it down, uh, you know, right off the bat, which they said with that, that amount of increase, I think they will.
I, I think the school budget is roughly 5% increase proposed.
5.65. Yeah. It's on the line.
It's pretty similar. I think it's like, you know, the town and the school are both looking at significant increases. And that's how you get to a 10, 11% total budget increase.
Yeah. And most of the school increases attributable to largely to the contracts increasing. Looks like generally they've held most of their other expenses flat, and then they add now placement they had to count for.
Okay. Yeah, that's, that's my take. Uh, yeah. It's a, it's a wait and see thing. You know, times are, times are tough and, and everything's going up every day. So, uh, try to set a set a cost figure for, you know, fuel and propane and everything else. Forget it. You know, it's just, it, watch the markets. It varies every day. So.
I will say this is, there's more volatility right now, certainly than, you know, and I, and if you look at the current budget compared to what we, you know, we were in, we had been coming out of a long period of relatively stable cost basis. You know, and, you know, last year we put out a budget and then we ended up with a, you know, what a a 7.8% uh, increase in the consumer price index. I mean, that's pretty hard to deal with, you know, when you weren't anticipating. Um, and we're definitely feeling the effects of that in this year's budget. There's no question.
All right. I'll keep going around. Um, Joanne, I have you up next.
You're on mute.
You're on mute.
I'm trying to get it. Okay. There we go. Yeah. Um, I mean, I can appreciate everybody's comments that they've said so far. But I, and truthfully, I'm just a realist. We've got to admit this budget will never pass. I, you know, put a lot of time and effort into attending all the town meetings and everything. So I definitely hope that if we're going to meet week after week, look at this stuff, that we do something with our time, you know, if we really think it's not going to pass. I mean, I get, because there's going to be several more weeks before we get to the town meeting or the town hearing. I do get that we need a lot of things too, um, in the town. So that's why I would rather, you know, I wish we could prioritize. And this was great. We did ask Eric to come forward with the definite priorities and where they wanted to see the funds spent. The other thing to take into consideration with the inflation that, you know, that's hitting families too. And the other thing with the revale, this is just such a tough year because you know, in years past, if you all look at your, and I think the revale did a good, good job. I love real estate. So I think they were spot on in a lot of houses that I've spot checked around town. I think they did a really, really good job. So it's just normally you might get, say you have an increase in every year, your taxes might go up maybe 250. I was just looking at my own, which I'm not putting myself in this picture. But just to compare, maybe $20 a month more. People are looking at, if this budget passes, significant. You know, a couple thousand or something, you know, you have to look at, so you know, they have to budget that monthly into their monthly homes. It's not that little $20 a month increase to support everything. It's going to be a big chunk for a lot of people. So I get that we need a lot of the things and, and, you know, I'll sit back and listen to you more experienced board members, but I've put a lot of time into listening already and studying, and I know we all have to catch up there and we will. But maybe we should make a little bit of a cut before we go to the meeting, because then I just feel like we're going to be rushing the cuts after that. I don't know. I'll, I'll sit down.
Yeah. Okay. Just, I just want to remind everybody that the process is that we have a public hearing before we actually go to town meeting. So one of the things that we could do is have that public hearing and then make any cuts based on kind of what we're hearing from the public. Now I doubt you're going to have a lot of public come in and say you need to raise the budget. We have to kind of understand, you know, that there, there may not necessarily be a representative sample at the meetings or voicing, but, but that is part of the process. So it's something to, to consider. So.
But isn't that three weeks or something? We still have three weeks before the here. I definitely know about the hearing part and then the meetings.
Yeah. I mean, we're, we're certainly, whatever we take to the hearing, we can, we can present a different budget than what we have on the table now. There's nothing preventing us from doing that.
Right. I mean, one of the things that we could try to do going into that meeting. Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
No, I was just going, I just, we, we haven't given Louise a chance to speak yet. I'm going to, if I could let her do that. Sorry, Louise. And then we'll go back to Rob.
No problem. Um, I, I know last year was a fiasco, but I thought it was good that how because it was high, Eric actually did like a bare bones type of budget. And then we kind of came up from there. Sounded like that's something that we might want to.
Sounded like that's something that we might want to look at for this year before we do go to public hearing. And that way we can kind of at least tell the public that we kind of went on both ends and tried to meet in the middle. Because I think at this point, I think it is a little high. And that's my view on it.
Okay.
The total by taxation is increasing, uh. Let's see. The three point five percent, it's five point two percent. So total taxation is going up five point two percent. When you add in the aggregate of everything.
So even though our, you know, operating budget and capital expenditure and whatnot is going like ten percent, the actual taxation level is only rising half that.
Correct, correct.
Now, is that, no, last year we had the revale kicking in. Is what's the, what's the difference for the, what's the reason for the difference between those standings this year?
So, the, the first thing is if you look at revale, though, so the revale, like, you know what, let me just share my screen again. Okay, so, the, the, uh. Last year, one mill. You know, created two hundred and seventy one thousand dollars worth of revenue. This year, one mill creates three hundred and ten thousand dollars worth of revenue. So the mill rate with the budget that we're currently presented. Will drop from thirty five point eight seven down to thirty three point zero two.
Okay.
But the mill rate doesn't really affect the tax dollars.
That's not what really matters to people, so.
Right, right.
Everybody's taxes is going up.
Right, you, you asked about the mill rate, but.
No, I didn't. I asked about, you said the total taxation increase was a five point some odd percent. We have a total expenditure increase of something like ten. So what I was saying is. You know, one of the big things I think people need to understand is the, why the, what the difference is between that. Are we getting more grant money? Are we? Uh, you know, uh, there's a once off. You know, what is it that creates the disconnect?
There's an increase in revenue, um, like if you go up to the. Well, yeah, I mean, everything is taxes ultimately, you know, when you get right down.
Federal grant money or something, yes, and that's.
Well, but that's taxes too.
Sure, but it's not, what I mean is people's real estate taxes in town, uh, Eric, I know you, I know you're right.
Oh, it's right. It's not the real estate taxes that's going up, it's, it's the, the, it's the personal property taxes that would have the biggest impact. Because the grand list increased due to autom- automobiles. Am I, am I guessing right there or understanding driving that?
That, the personal property for automobiles has increased pretty dramatically. But the real estate has gone up, you know, overall, real estate is up around fifteen percent. And since that's the majority of the tax money that's collected, that's the bigger factor.
I, I, I guess the point would make, I'm not even really trying to make a point, I'm trying to zero in on something, but up the point I make is. So, you know, I got my revaluation, my, my property value went up, ergo, everything else being equal. My taxes go up, right? That's fine. I'm not complaining about it, I'm just noting it, okay? So then, we have a budget where you say the total increase in taxation is X. Right, five percent or whatever it is. That's really important. But if we have a expenditure increase that's higher, clearly the difference between those two is made up by something else, like.
Like increased.
The grand list increase.
Not grand list increase, because grand list increase is just what sets the mill rate. The budget, you know, this number down here. This number right here, which is how much we need to collect in taxes. This is how much we collect in taxes. There's only two things that factor into that. One, what our budget is, and two, what our revenue is. Um, so, you know, the way you get this number down is to increase revenue or.
Decrease spending, got it.
Right?
Okay, I, I feel like we're.
So that's irrelevant of the mill rate.
I feel it's my fault, but I, maybe we're talking past each other a little bit.
I think we lost Joanne, so she just texted me. She just wants to make sure she hears what you guys are saying.
Okay, no, you know, I may have gone down a rabbit hole here, uh, because ultimately. What people are gonna look at is the increase in their taxation, more than anything. But when we, when we plan, you know, we know that that's only part of the, the picture, right? And I was trying to, to, I was trying to fully understand the difference between the five point two percent. Right?
Right.
And the ten, eleven percent that was talked about before, in terms of expenditure.
Okay, because see, from a, from a, what we discuss standpoint. The only thing I'm really discussing right now is the town's portion of the budget. But remember, the town's portion of the budget's only twenty percent, twenty seven percent of the overall budget.
Right, so the school budget is the difference.
Yeah.
That's the answer, that's the answer, that's.
Yeah, don't forget the RAM budgets is, is actually, uh, it's actually reduced.
Down, yeah, although, yeah, partly, it's largely about the enrollment chain. They get, they actually went up slightly, I think, right? Um, but it was such a small increase in our.
Yeah, we're not talking about the total budget here and, you know, we, we should have.
It's the Andover, you know, portion, I get it. Uh, so, look, if we take this, what, the point is, if we take this budget to town meeting, right, this budget right here. We're asking for a five point two percent increase, not so much. Right? Or is that the five point two?
That is correct, yeah.
No, that is five point two percent is the total, the total amount of money we're talking about collecting in taxes. Right now, between the town and over elementary school and RAM is ten million, two hundred and forty seven thousand.
Good, so that is not as crazy as, you know, uh, you know, a ten percent. So I wish you, you know, I'm not saying five point two percent is gonna pass, I'm just saying that it's a lot less eye popping. Than, you know, ten or eleven percent or something, ten or eleven percent being the town only, okay?
Yeah, 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 we weren't thinking about the next step earlier.
You know, when we think about going to a, an informational meeting. Uh, and what I was gonna say before, before I got totally sidetracked and confused, was that. You know, we could go to that meeting as a board with some. Options that we can lay out, you know, look, here's what we're being told we need. And as experienced, the people who've been at this for a few years, you know, we know that we've underfunded capital, we know that we have these needs. But we can prioritize and help us prioritize. Should we cut this, should we cut that? Uh, if you want us to get this number down. That's one thing we could do. Or we could just go in with the numbers and let it happen, but, uh, you know, there's, there's a couple ways of going about it. That's all I'm thinking.
Yeah. Just really a way to get public input. I don't know that we would want to go to a. You know, vote on option A or B or C or, or have people, I mean, people get on with posts, it's, it sounds like we don't. You, you just enlarge the committee of the Board of Finance when you start doing that. I'd be a little hesitant about that approach. I understand, I understand what you're saying. I do think we need to get that input. Um, and just for a matter, this is a matter of, uh, point of information. You know, just the total taxation to be raised, um, it, that ten point two four seven. What that basically gives you at a four point two percent increase, for every hundred K you drop out of there, it's about a one percent increase reduction. So for example, if you were gonna drop out, if we were gonna. Eric can throw in some things out there, like, okay, if we wanted to remove the full-time budget. Where the full-time position in the Department of Public Works and maybe reduce the contingency fee, the two of those is about a hundred K. So that would take it from about five point two to four point two. So that's something we have in our back pocket, so to speak, if, if it seems like this five point two percent overall is gonna be. Um, just completely unpalatable to people, so. I just wanted to point that out, it's just kind of a scope of, of where the differentials end up running, you start producing. You know, you're, you're probably gonna have to do fifty, fifty to a hundred thousand dollars.
Can I just interrupt for one? I apologize at the most important time that I wanted to hear what you all were saying. Everything just blacked out on my computer. Um, and, you know, I probably could miss other times because I've heard about it, but this is. I, and I don't, Eric was just starting to talk about the mill rate and I get it, I don't want to back you all the way back there, but.
Have you sort of went down a rabbit hole? It's not that, I don't think it's, you missed all that much, actually.
But this matters to me, so I.
I was zeroing in on the actual percentage increase to be raised by taxation. You know, which, you know, is the five point two percent number, which we're looking at right now. Um, that's what I really wanted.
Gone for a while, as I was trying every computer, um.
Yeah, I'm sorry to hear that, that's annoying.
Well, especially because it's the part that I wanted to hear, but.
Joanne, I, I, I can recap really quickly, so.
But I, I don't want to make, but thank you.
Right.
That's fine.
More the spending that I guess I have, you know, once we. My concern was I didn't want to miss, and thank you, Eric. You know, once we pass a budget, the town will always have that spending, whether the, you know. I mean, you can cut it drastically if you try, but it's what people get used to, so. With the revale and all, right now we're at a high with the taxation coming in. We all know there's trends, I mean, so, thank you, Eric, I'll listen.
Well, I, I guess all I was saying is that, um, when we talk about the town's portion of the budget. Right now, we're talking about a roughly eleven percent increase in the town's portion of the budget. But the town only controls twenty seven percent of the budget, plus or minus. The rest is education. So when you take in AES and RAM in the town, combine them all. Um, you know, we're looking at a, a smaller increase. But part of that is also due to the fact that we have some increase in revenues. That helps offset the additional spending. So when you take in the, uh, the increased revenue, along with the fact of all three budgets together. Overall, what we're asking the public for right now is a five point two percent increase in taxation. Um, which translates into a specific mill rate. In this case, it translates into a mill rate about thirty three. Based on the current grand list. But we don't budget on mill rate, we budget on expenses and we budget on, uh, revenue.
And spending, well, budget, budget on, yep, thank you so much. I'll sit back. I was panicked.
Louise had a, a couple of questions.
Okay. Yeah, um, yeah, thanks Eric for explaining that. That makes a lot more sense with the five point two. With that in mind, I'm gonna recap, I'm gonna go back to what I was saying before and change it. Um, I know people have gone through the revale process and. Real estate as far as cars and all that have gone up. I think people are expecting taxes to go up a little bit. So I don't think, I think the five point two. And I think basically, because we didn't do a heck of a lot last year, people are gonna expect that we have to do more this year. So. I know it's only your part of the budget, the, the town part of the budget, but I'm gonna say that. I think we should probably go in at something close to this and see what happens. As long as we explained to people about, you know, last year and all these other changes have gone on. I think people might be a little more acceptable to something that, like five point two instead of. What we were talking about a few minutes ago. So thanks for that explanation, Eric.
Other comments?
One of the things we have to do a better job at, because I don't think we do a good job at it right now, is. This has gotta be summed up in a way, this budget as it stands now is a budget. Set up to do a lot of public works projects and a lot of road projects. And to put the resources to do that, because we didn't do it last year and we didn't do it the year before. So, you know, and then that becomes the taxpayer's choice whether they want to invest into the town for that or not. Um, but I think we have to clearly explain to them what this budget is and what it's meant to accomplish. And then it's their choice whether they want to do that work or not, I mean. Because we've got bridges coming down the road, we've got culverts coming down the road, that isn't even in this budget, you know, this is just doing the roadwork stuff.
Well, there's a bunch of that money in this budget. You know, I mean, we are putting money away in culverts and we are putting away money for the bunker hill bridge.
Right, but it's not gonna probably cover everything unless we get grants, so.
True.
I mean, so. So I mean, I just think that people need to know, this budget represents. Planning for the roadwork.
W- with all due respect, w- we try to do that every year. Give a good cogent explanation of why we need to do this and that and why we need the money. It just doesn't always work.
That's a good point.
Joanne, you had a, your hand up?
I think, um, and I, all of those are good points. Um, I just wondered, it sounded like you were saying. How much would have to be cut to even, like you said, the five two. We're in, when I got back on, Mark, I think you were saying there'd have to be significant, like, uh, I'm not saying we're gonna do that. But in order to even dent the percentage, we'd have to cut, I mean, I could do the math too, but like fifty to a hundred thousand, is that what you were saying?
I, yeah, roughly at this, at this level, a hundred thousand dollars is a percentage point.
Okay, that's good to know, yeah.
From, from the difference percentage point. So it just, it just gives us kind of a scope of what. From an, you know, optics perspective, what it looks, what it would look like to actually, you know, make people think, okay, you moved the needle a little bit.
Right, if you're looking, if your, if your target's three percent, you're gonna get two hundred grand, that's the idea.
Yeah. You know, my personal feeling on this is that we probably, you know, five point two percent is a lot. You know, it's not ten or twelve, but, you know, we can, I, I feel like we could go into a hearing with this and see what the feedback is. Um, and then, you know, we. During the hearing and then even more in the budget meeting, we, we make, we pull, pull out all the stops. To explain it, as Diane pointed out, to make sure it's as clear as could be, you know, what we're trying to accomplish here. And, uh, we focus on the big changes, the ones where we really think, hey, you know, let's not spend a lot of time on the small stuff. Let's focus on the big ones and really talk about what it's, you know, all about. What's really making the impact and, and, you know, we, we go from there.
It is unfortunate that we can never get, because I know the other towns are kind of. Saying that the RAM budget of clearly is high again. And it's unfortunate that even if you tried, I mean, unless. A little publicity gets out there, I've had, you know, reading in the River East, I was reading how, um, the Hebron. Town manager thought the RAM budget was too high this year too and different things, so. If we could lose a little bit there, could do more in the town of Andover, but, um, because that's the biggest driver of the budget, but.
Yeah, that's always an issue, every year. Um, that said, of all years, this is a. Tough year, I mean, I've, I've been down on RAM in the past, um, this year. I can't remember their overall budget number this year, but I feel like it was in this, you know.
Over thirty million.
No, no, I'm talking about increase, but, um, I feel like.
Actually, reduction because of the, not having to make that bond payment anymore.
Right, and then.
One point four percent under.
Right, and our enrollment is down too, so we, you know, it adjusts our.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, of, of all years, like, there have been years where I was extremely frustrated with RAM, because they weren't getting it. Um, and I feel like that's actually the worm has kind of turned, but, you know, the fact is that there are legacy. You know, when you, i- if we, if we're, if we were right about our concerns in the RAM in the past and that they overspent, then even now when they start to get it. We have that sort of hangover effect. Um, and I feel that's kind of like where we're at now. Uh, they actually, this budget actually really isn't terrible from, from, from the standpoint of when I've been on the board. Uh, compared to other RAM budgets, but in fact, the matter has been it's forty some odd percent of our budget. Even small tweaks really matter.
Right, except for the fact that. Right, except for the fact that, I mean, if their budget for everything other than the bond payments. Had come in the same as last year, we would be looking at a two hundred and ninety thousand dollar decrease in the RAM budget. Not a seventy thousand dollar increase in the budget. So the actual increase.
Right.
In our portion of their budget, you know, is a little over two hundred thousand dollars. Which is basically the same as the elementary school. And the other thing I would point out is we're getting close in enrollment right now. That by next year, the elementary school enrollment is going to be basically equal to RAM. Enrollment and we're going to have, you know, a four point one million dollar elementary school budget. And a five point one million dollar RAM budget. You know, and, and you start to say, those are getting a little out of whack, you know, when you really look at that.
Yep. No, no argument there. You're right.
And the numbers on our spreadsheet are going to go up because there's numbers that have to come up with the stuff that Eric brought forward today, the lower numbers in the spreadsheet, so. It's just gonna go up.
So maybe it's five point five instead of five point two or something?
Right.
Probably not that much.
What we're talking about are not big changes.
You know, you got maybe, maybe fifteen, twenty thousand.
Oh, okay. That's not, that's so five point three instead of five point two.
Right.
Let's sell, it's fifteen or twenty, twenty thousand dollars is a lot of money to us.
You know, twenty thousand dollars here, twenty thousand dollars there, soon you're talking about real money. I get it.
Yeah, I was waiting for that one.
Yeah, you know, you know, it's coming. Uh, no, you're not wrong, Diane. Uh, we have to nail it all down and tighten it up before we go to the public with it.
Uh, Louise has her hand up. I'd like to let her talk.
Yeah, um, the new project that's in town, um, Dollar General supposedly. Just curious what kind of impact that might be on this budget? Or would it actually be on next year's budget if that does go through?
It depends on when the project gets completed, huh? Or mostly.
Okay.
Um, mostly, I don't think it's going to positively affect this year's budget. Um, but by next year, we'll see some increase in the grand list, but it's not going to be huge. You know, in a, a three hundred and ten million dollar grand list, you might get a five hundred thousand dollar bump. For that building, something in that range.
Okay, well, take it.
Yeah.
Building it proper.
All needs.
Okay, thanks.
I was just, oh, sorry. Face a lot of what I've seen you all face in the past, you know, we're going to have everybody that's going to question the school budget. I mean, we have to be realistic. I was one of them, you know, just like RAM, if, if they could cut a little, even if RAM would cut fifty grand. Or seventy grand, there you go, somewhere, even piecing it together. I think you're going to have everybody question the school budget and they're going to ask all the questions of Valerie and then. It's going to be interesting how we propose the town side, like you said, so.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
When is the, uh, RAM referendum again?
I believe it's March third.
March third?
I mean.
May third, thank you. I was like, wait a minute, I kind of missed an important vote there. Yeah, May third, so that may be something to point people to. That's coming up. If you're concerned about our budget numbers, don't forget to participate. That's always a thing we try to remind people of, I think. Because once, once we go to town meeting with our budget, that's done. And it's the single largest chunk, so kind of important.
Right, yep. You know, typically by the time we get to town budget meeting, forty percent of our budget is already set in stone.
A rectumundo, and it's always a frustration because there are always people who are annoyed about it, but it's done. So.
Right.
We wrote letters last year and I know they have a new board who, um, you know, if I had time, I would love to listen to their meetings. Because I read about the people that got elected. I just, I can't fit in more meetings in the evening, but. Um, but yeah, so it's going to be interesting how the tide goes. I don't think that their budget is finalized yet.
No, and I can check tomorrow, you know, before we give you the next budget document. We'll give it to you with the stuff we talked about for electrical tonight. Um, you know, and if Diane, if you give us every, you know, all the areas that you're concerned or you have questions. Um, we'll give you responses to that. And then I will check and see whether RAM, because I know they've, they're having budget meetings regularly. Whether the superintendent has a new, you know, working budget number, um, that's changed.
So the Board of Ed is supposed to vote on it on Monday, the RAM Board of Ed.
This month, coming Monday?
That's the fourth, yeah.
Okay.
So. I don't think they're going to reduce it. So depending, so that would give us a good halfway decent number, right? What, what they approve, so. Also, in the last meeting, we talked about. The diesel fuel number for Public Works and trying to figure out that number. Was that number only Public Works because it's shared? You know, that diesel is all shared between. Other departments that I wanted to make sure that we just had the cost for Public Works in Public Works.
You know, that's a good question and I still have not gotten to the bottom of that.
Okay.
Let me put that back on my to-do list.
Mark, what we talked about last week was there's a diesel fuel, which we know we have a contract for. But we have one tank, it gets filled up and that's shared with the school, the fire department and Public Works. So the number that's in Public Works, I just want to make sure it's just their expense, because the other people pay their own, so.
Fire Commission gets the report from Town Hall, um, whether it's monthly or bi-monthly, and we just, we, we pay that amount. Yeah, let's get the number.
Useages of some sort.
Yes, there is. There's a, every truck is metered for the, for its amount of use of fuel.
I just want to make sure that number that's in our spreadsheet is just Public Works costs.
Yeah, I took a look at the account and I do see the different departments putting in the money that they have been built, so. Um, the other thing is what, we're going to do a spreadsheet on that diesel fuel. Um, because the electricity is already done, so diesel fuel is next. I have it on my list too. Um. To put together how it works. I do have a quick question, just for clarification.
My question is not how it works, because I get how it works. I just want to make sure the number we have in our spreadsheet is only Public Works. I get that other people pay into the.
Yeah, that's fine. Everything will be included, but I know what you, you're after. Um. The year-to-date, uh, figures. Do you want them brought up to February or March? I mean, because by the time we do it, it's going to be March, uh, ending March soon, so.
I think that's an excellent idea, because I think the public will want to see the year-to-date numbers.
Okay, so March, we're, we're talking?
Yeah.
And then periodically keep updating as we go along. Is that correct? We'll do.
Joanne?
Only if this is the time to ask this question. So are we thinking whatever else we discussed tonight, we'll get, Sherry will update the figures. And Eric will put in whatever we talked tonight and maybe next week we'll finally see the. Be the real, I mean, it won't differ that much, but we'll take a look at that next week. Is that what we're?
I think that would be a good approach, because I think we got, we have to start doing it. I, I do agree, we want to see the proposed changes that Eric. Had in his sheet. Uh, today, we'll get updated, you know, month-end numbers if possible. Sherry will have them then, and, um. You know, to me, it makes sense when we start, we start going through it. And hopefully at that point too, we'll also have an answer to any discrepancies that Diane's identified.
Yeah, I will email my spreadsheet out and I'll just include everybody in the email, so everybody.
That'd be good.
Very good.
Do that first thing tomorrow morning.
All right.
Sure.
Because it's, it's going to be time to get down into the nitty-gritty, make sure that we're comfortable with the numbers and make a decision about whether we want to. Change anything or in our recommended budget that we take to the town hearing. And then we'll have another opportunity to obviously change that before we go to town meeting.
Also, could I have Joanne Heber email me her question from the last meeting on the school? Um, if you could.
Oh, from what, what I tried to ask last week?
Yeah. So she wants to make sure that we get that answer to you.
Oh, thank you. Yep, yep, I will. Thank you, Sherry.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, so it sounds like we have a plan for the next week. Hopefully, it sounds like a lot to get through, but if we can get all that in, that would be great. Um, any other discussion tonight or questions?
Are there any other particular focus areas that you want, you all want information back from us?
You know, I'm going to ask you a question that came up earlier and just because this is not, this is not an answer to your response to your, your question right there, Eric, but. You mentioned that in the, um, on the, uh, the town fields and stuff that you were talking about increasing the cost of that football club. To the soccer club?
I'd suggest doing it, sure.
Yeah, where, where does that revenue fall under? That's really what my question was.
That's a good question. Where do we?
Rentals for the rentals. That's the revenue line I'm called rentals.
Oh, oh, okay, well. Cause it's only fifteen hundred in there now, okay, so.
That's got to be moved in, right?
Okay, okay, all right, thanks, Sherry. That makes sense. I actually looked all the way down and I, I didn't, I didn't see that, that probably would have been the obvious one. So, sorry to derail the question, Eric, to ask if there's anything else that. Any larger areas, any specific areas that he should be focusing on to answer questions? I don't have any at this point.
When are we going to get our audit?
So, working on some things today. I was working on things today for the auditor, like questions they had. Um. They are probably going to have to take another extension. And it'll be sometime in April they're shooting for.
Any indication we're going to have surprising results?
Not that I know of. Um, things are checking me out as we go along. So there hasn't been any.
I think on any unexpendence funds that exceed a hundred thousand, we put a hundred thousand placeholder in there, we got to give it back, so I just want to know if we have anything more than that. To add back.
They're not at that point yet, so. They're going through, we have to pull things, we have to pull invoices, we have to, because they got to do that test. And, um, any revenue, they're going to pull that. And, uh, any payroll items. Um, so we're going to get the open item list and then we're going to go through and pull all those for them to, for test.
I do have notes on the revenue tab too, for revenue items, because there's some things that I don't understand on there too.
Okay.
I did add a column in my spreadsheet, so it'll be different than yours. Sherry, when you sent out that updated revenue report, I updated and put it in the actual revenues from that report. Into a column on this, on that revenue tab, just so I could benchmark where we're at, so.
Okay.
Other questions or comments?
I do, I have one farther, fi- final question here, sorry.
Go ahead, Joanne, yeah.
I'm sorry, the computer problem, so. I guess I feel like we have enough information as long as everything is updated, you know, so that we can, you know, from Eric, so that. And you're going to send us that sheet that you said at the beginning of the meeting you had. Um, so you'll send that after the meeting, the Board of. And then just personally, because I hate to miss anything, did I miss any discussion at the beginning of the meeting? You know, leaving off, um, I know you introduced the new person, so did I miss anything there?
I don't think so. Um. I don't think so. I, I agree. I don't think you really missed anything of substance.
Thank you very much for putting up with me. Tonight's not been my best night here with the computer problems and. Trying to just get it all, yeah.
It happens to the best of us.
I know, and I don't want to miss the thing, you know, of course you missed the things that you were waiting to hear or whatever. No, um, thank you.
So I do have one other question, and that is because at the next meeting. Uh, you're going to have to decide and set a date for the, you know, your public here. So, th- that's not a problem. My question for you is, do you all intend to do that via Zoom? Or do you intend to do that in person? What is your thoughts or call on that?
That's a very good question. Um, I.
I vote Zoom.
You vote Zoom? I mean, it's certainly a lot more convenient. Uh, it allows more access by more people. There's maybe a segment of the population that's not comfortable with it.
Because, well.
Opinion?
I'm neutral on it. I've gotten used to Zoom. I'm comfortable with doing Zoom, but I also understand some people like the. You know, personal interaction, uh, and, you know, I can rule either way, so. You know, all this is to say I have no opinion, so. Could do as you will, everyone else.
I am seeing towns doing hybrid, Zoom and in-person, so I've seen that happening lately too.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a little, uh, I don't know if we're quite set up to do that, but, uh, probably could.
Yeah, we're not unfortunately real well set up for that. I mean, we had gotten a grant and bought a whole bunch of fancy camera equipment. Um, that I honestly, for hybrid meetings is already out of date, um, which is kind of irritating to me. Um. You know, we have a real, really cool camera for filming things, um, but. You know, in terms of setting up for an actual hybrid meeting, um, we're not well set up for that. And the other problem is our normal spot for doing it is the community room. You know, and the acoustics are pretty horrible in that room, so it's not an easy fit. Um, in that room.
Yeah, you know, I'm, I'm fine. I'm, I'm kind of like Rob. I'm, I'm neutral on this one. Um. You know, obviously the town meeting is going to be in person. Um. And I think that that's the more important piece. Um, you know, the hearing is just an opportunity for us to gather feedback and, and, uh. Kind of see, see where people have, if anyone has any ideas or if we're. Meeting a lot more resistance in some areas, whether underfunded or overfunded, so. I'm, I'm, I'm okay with a virtual meeting.
I'm okay too.
Everybody.
Depend on how COVID is too. At that point, if it's only a couple of weeks away, it's not that much of a difference, but. A lot of the meetings are kind of looking at that as well.
All right, anybody have any other?
We're looking at May, right? We're talking about May, or are we talking for the, the original meet, the first meeting, are we in April?
Third week of April, so.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm just looking at my calendar and I just got some information in about May that I was trying to. I'm trying to schedule around, that's all. Um. You know, so if, you know, April is. Fine, uh, you know, town meeting is usually the final, when we bring the budget to the town, that's usually in early May, right? Early to mid-May?
Probably be May fourth.
Okay, okay. Okay, okay. Very good. Thanks.
I think we have to do our public meeting somewhere that third week in the twenties there, I think. There's, the charter says how many days before.
Right.
Yeah, no.
Right, so the, the week after Easter.
I don't know when Easter is, so.
The seventeenth, eighteenth. Seventeenth of April. Sorry, I don't know, I'm looking at the calendar. Um. I'm fine with that, I just wanted, I just wanted to have that in my head, thanks guys, I if I don't put it in my phone these days, I swear.
Yeah.
I can't.
Yeah, it's always good to have that calendar.
I, i- it's bad, because otherwise it just, it leaks right out of my brain, so.
Yeah, so the, the, just as the, the Ram, looks like the Ram referendum I had in my calendar is May third. That somebody may have mentioned that already, so the town budget meeting would then be the following day and we wouldn't necessarily we'd probably have the results, right, so.
Yeah, we would not, so like the.
We'll know what it is, if it failed, we don't know, won't know what it is, but.
Yeah, but it'll be real close, it'll be real tight.
Yeah. Okay. So to go back to the hearing dates, um, had you, had you suggested a date for that? Um. Eric, or you said, man?
Uh, I did, I gave you.
Sheet there that you sent out.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the thirteenth is a, we have a special meeting scheduled, it could be that day or it could do rather not have it the twentieth, just. You know, I can do it, if it needs to be, but. It's a family, they're not a big deal, but. Twenty-seventh is our normally scheduled meeting also. I mean, I don't think we have to decide today, I think we should have a pretty good idea of the schedule and, and agree on it by tomorrow or by next week.
I think the twenty-seventh is too late, I think it's gotta be the week before, the week before the, one of those.
Yeah, you're right, it's got it, yeah. You know, I would suggest the hearing probably on the, on the thirteenth would be an appropriate time.
I think that's a, that's a good time to get good feedback if we're not, you know, from the public, so I agree.
Eric, is that a sigh of?
Uh, let me just hang on two secs. Uh. Cause I put out a suggested schedule.
Yeah.
I had suggested either April twenty-fifth or twenty-sixth for the public hearing. Um, cause that's not less than sixty days before the end of the fiscal year. Um. And then that means you would also have to send the vote to budget to town meeting on the twenty-sixth, so the mailers could go out. So that's the actual last time you could do it. You could back it up. So drop dead, you gotta do it no later than the twenty-sixth of April.
Which is a Tuesday.
Earlier.
Which is a Tuesday, just so everyone knows. Um. But speaking.
If we have a hearing, then that doesn't allow us to, a meeting, I guess we, we have a meeting scheduled the next day on the twenty-seventh, the regularly scheduled meeting, but we, if we wanna make changes post-hearing, we're gonna need some time. I mean, we need a meeting to discuss the.
Also, I would just say that Mondays and Tuesdays are particularly bad for me, so if we can back that up to the week prior, I personally would appreciate it. That's just me though, you guys of course can do this without me if you need to.
So you wanna do it the weekend that starts on the thirteenth? Sometime between the thirteenth and the eighteenth is what you would like to do.
Wait, wait, hold up, hold up.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. My bad.
So when I'm looking at this, the twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth of April and Monday, Tuesday. Right?
Right, so you're looking at the weekend starting the eighteenth, between the eighteenth and the twenty-second.
The eighteenth is the day after Easter, right, which is why I mentioned it, cause it's kinda, it's just on my phone calendar for some reason. I don't know if that's a holiday or whatever, but, um, nineteenth, twentieth, twenty-first, twenty-second, you know, well, twenty-second's a Friday, people don't usually do things on a Friday, but I personally can do things on, say, the twentieth or the twenty-first that are way easier than doing them on the twenty-fifth or twenty-sixth.
But we could do it the one day before, like the thirteenth, right? We can go earlier.
Well, the twentieth.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna be out of town starting the twentieth through the twenty-fifth, so I'm not really.
Oh, well then.
We need some time with the pub, the, ah. A lot, oh, there you are.
Yes. Here, dear.
I think we need some time with the public input, you know, then to take actions, like Mark was saying, I feel pressured to make all the decisions like in two days. If we have, so, my, that's all.
I mean, uh, you know. I'd rather keep our normal Wednesday schedule, I mean, I'm fine Monday and Tuesday, but it's problematic for others. Um, you know, I will be out of town, you know, it's twentieth, I could, I could make, it's not a great day and first thing in the next morning, I'm leaving, um, really, so that that, through the twenty-fifth, so those, those dates are out, not good for me. Um. If we held the hearing on the thirteenth, that does give us, you know, some time to come up with, you know, we can, we can set the you know, gives us another two weeks basically to have a meeting if we need to, we have a meeting, a regular scheduled meeting on the twenty-seventh. And then, uh, we look.
Sounds good for the public hearing and then we can, if we need to, we can schedule another workshop to discuss.
Schedule another workshop.
Okay with that.
Have a regular meeting on the twenty-seventh to come up with the final budget. And then the, uh, the town budget meeting would be the fourth.
Right.
Okay, so you're gonna make a motion to set the public hearing to the thirteenth? And that means our next budget meeting, which is the sixth. You will have to have a budget finalized to go to public hearing. That's what we're talking about.
That is what we're talking about, yeah.
Okay.
Two weeks from tonight.
Yep, you're gonna have, so next weekend, next Wednesday, which is the sixth, you'll have to officially you know, motion to send a budget to public hearing. If you're gonna do that.
And it doesn't mean it's the final one, it just means it's the one that's going to public hearing, so.
Correct.
You know, there's things we need to tweak, it's, as long as they're not material, I don't think it's a huge issue.
And we have.
Anybody have a concern about that schedule?
Well, the only thing is we haven't talked anything about the school, we always usually kind of put, we haven't had a discussion about the school budget yet. Either, so we're gonna do that all next ones, next week.
Well, we can't change the school budget until after the hearing per the charter.
Mm-hmm. Correct.
So we really have to have that hearing and then we can change the school budget, I believe, after that. It's a little long, it's a little quirky in there, but, yeah, we looked at that, it got brought up, I think. But I'm not sure that's what we did last time, it may have been, but.
I know we talked about the school budget last, last year, so, but I don't remember what day that was.
Well, I'm okay with that schedule, I'm okay with making our next meeting probably our toughest, um, so far.
Yeah, yeah, it's not final, but it is, we do, I think it's pretty close to it when we go to hearing.
No, we, yeah, we have to tighten some things up and make some decisions next time, and I'm, I'm up for that. You know, honestly, sometimes it's just important to put things on the calendar and make it happen, so, I'm in. And with Mark, you know, Mark being away and then, you know, some issues I've got coming up, yeah, let's just get it going.
Anybody wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion to have the annual public meeting Board of Finance on April thirteenth at seven PM.
I will second that motion.
Be a Zoom, I'm presuming, based on the discussion?
I'm, I vote Zoom, I don't know what anybody else wants.
Yeah, let's, let's have that as a motion, so.
Yeah.
Oh, let me, let me restate that if I could, so Diane is, is presented a motion to hold the uh, uh, Board of Finance budget hearing for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three budget at seven PM on April thirteenth. Correct? Anybody wanna second the motion?
I'll second it.
Yeah, Rob had seconded, I think, okay. Any discussion? Okay, we'll take a vote, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, thank you, we have a date. Alright, it's good, appreciate it, thank you. Okay, any further discussion on the budget? For this round?
I sent my spreadsheet out to everyone, if anybody has any questions, I'm usually available during the day, so you can give me a call.
Yep, I see it in my inbox.
Thanks, Dan, oh, great. Okay, so, sounds like no more discussion relative to the budget. The next agenda item is correspondence, I haven't received any, does anybody else have any they wanna present to the board? No, okay, we'll move on to item five, which is public speak, again, it looks like we do not have any members of the public in attendance at this time. Okay, the next agenda item is adjournment, would anybody like to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, Louise, you made the motion to adjourn, any second? Go ahead, Joanne.
I'll second it.
You were on, you were right there, alright, um, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
The opposed? Anybody abstaining? Okay, the meeting is adjourned, thank you, everybody, appreciate your, uh, your help, we're moving us down down the road a little bit, it's a lot of work ahead of us, but, uh, I think we're getting there. Thanks, have a good week, everybody.
Night.
Thanks, babe.
Night, everyone. Cheers.